We have another member of the Chinese committee and another member of the board on line, so we'll get going. Are we live?
Yes, we are live.
Good morning, everyone. It is Thursday morning, February fifteenth. It's right at eleven thirty-one. Thank you all for adapting to a little bit of an extended finance committee. I promised Ms. Sullivan that if we end early, we get a stretch break between our next committee meeting. So I just wanted to make sure we have enough time to have maybe an extended conversation. Let's go around the room for brief introductions for the record.
I think it's board number in committee.
Kirsten Johnson-Strumpler, Senior Director of Teaching and Learning for Secondary.
Andy Ratliff, CFO.
Katie Parrott, Senior Director, OMB.
Jim Anderson, CEO.
America Sullivan, Executive Assistant to the School Board.
Nicole Somerville, Director, Teaching and Learning Elementary Division, in place of Diana Beltrane. Amy Sutton, Eager Children's Health and Physical Education Coordinator.
Great. Thank you all for being here and again, thank you for adapting to a little bit. It's a busy time of year. I guess first on the agenda is FY twenty-four budget updates. And Andy, is that something that you have prepared?
Oh, I don't have anything prepared. It was more for time to ask questions and just start the dialogue around any changes you might want to see. The one thing I would bring up, you had asked a question in the.
I'm sorry, I was on a phone.
Okay, thank you. Oh, and sorry, online. Please introduce yourselves online. Well, I guess, okay, go ahead.
Mike Fleckenstein, Chief Information Officer.
Marco Bellamy, Board Member.
Carl Jacobs is here.
Jared Bryant, Superintendent.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, we'll turn the volume. Can you guys hear us okay?
Yes.
Great, okay, super. We've made you louder. And President Bellamy, your hand is up. Is that just to say in the introduction? Oh, you're good. Great. Okay.
That's correct.
Great, Andy, so.
All right. So the first thing I wanted to follow up on was you had asked a question at the board meeting about the potential for moving student activities costs into a, like a special revenue fund or something, have the city pay for that outside of the local contribution max for general operations. If you look into that, it appears that Juno does do that to the two million under three million dollars. I think Fairbanks does to some extent as well. I don't know about other districts. But really, the district has about five million dollars of headroom in their upper limit on the local cap or the local tax cap. So really, I think we could probably reasonably move that into, you know, this into a special revenue fund and then reassign those costs now, assuming the assembly will give us an extra five million on that. But I would say the risk on that is if we don't have any move in the BSA or other one-time money and the state comes back and disallows that. So if both of those happen, then, you know, we could be in trouble, but that seems fairly unlikely at this point. I would say, you know, if we do get additional money after that, if we did go ahead and do that, I'd prefer to keep those in the general fund because we'd be at the local cap anyway. And it's just easier to maintain that way of less administrative burden for having to create a new fund, have new reporting structure, new training for our schools.
So could you, okay, so if you could break that down a little bit more slowly for me. What I think I hear you saying and anybody else is that we could create a new special revenue fund.
Right, it would be like our existing student activities funds, just to put the dedicated tax receipts in to pay just for student activities.
Okay.
And that's if we don't get any additional new state money, which would increase that local max. Because right now, we're at the local or at the state cap in our operating fund. But if we were to get additional, you know, thirty million dollars or something from the state, then our local cap in that general fund would go up as well. So we could accommodate the increased ask for the city up to the local tax cap within our general fund still.
Okay. Oh, and Member Wilson, great, we have all three members.
So the state hasn't actually put it in writing that they're good with it.
They have not. And what I, the response I got from deed was that as far as they are aware, Juno doesn't do that. And their activities funds are paid for by student fees. Their budget documentation says otherwise. So if you, it took me like two or three minutes to find the documentation that said they were doing this outside the cap. It's very explicit.
Right, it's in the Juno borough's budget.
Yeah, in the school district's budget as well.
In the school district's budget as well.
I don't know how explicit, just their, what they submit to the state, how explicit it is. But within the presentation they gave to the borough, which is what I looked at, that had it all included outside of the cap.
What is your comfort level from an administrative perspective in moving forward with that?
I would be pretty comfortable. I think it's, I think it's unlikely they would come back until all districts, that they can't accept this local money and not give us or not have any sort of BSA or one-time funding increase overall. Because that's the other aspect of it too. If we're requesting five million dollars from the city, but the state says, okay, now this is going to be inside your general tax cap, but they give us BSA money, that increases our general tax cap. So the risk, I think, is probably pretty low in doing that, going forward with it either way.
Can you help me understand what the process for asking for additional money from municipalities would look like?
So it would, yeah, so it would be, and kind of scroll down to the tax cap information we have in our budget. So this is our, our property tax limitation, so how we calculate how much we can increase our property cap. Asked by right now are about five million under. Largely, it's because we haven't been able to increase our additional local contribution because our enrollment's gone down. So the process would really be, once the board approves this, if the board approved this in the budget, this would change to about zero under the tax cap. And when we submit the assembly ordinance for property tax request, it would go in there. So we would just increase it. You'd see a line item in here too, talking about the taxes requested for their general fund and transportation, we'd see another five million dollar line item in our activities.
Okay, in the, under the local.
Under the local taxes, yeah.
Okay, that makes sense. Yeah.
When do we have our next joint meeting?
President Bellamy, can, have you made any headway on when the next meeting would be assembly is?
So America might have more up-to-date information than I do. It was set for March eighth. Keep in mind, we have to have our budget to them by March fourth. But then that date won't work for them, so we're looking at the fifteenth or the twenty-second or when that, no, not the fifteenth, because that wouldn't work for them either. So we're looking at probably around March, somewhere the week of March twenty-second. America, did you have any other communication with him?
No, they, from my understanding, the March dates did not work for them.
Oh, none of the March dates?
No.
Okay. All right, so that answers you, Member Higgins. It's not going to be until April. And if I might, Madam Chair, I want to thank, I just had a question for Mr. Ratliff.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we, we are three weeks out from having to have a balanced budget to the assembly. And, and I guess I'm, I don't know that there's time for us to, well, maybe, maybe there is. I don't know that there's time for us to make a step like cutting sports and hoping that the Muni gives us money for it and hoping that we'll be able to, to bring it back. I mean, I, I, I don't know that I, is that what I'm hearing? Because I'm, I'm not willing to do that.
Let me go ahead and explain what I was looking at. One is if we have a conversation with at least some assembly people, they'll, they'll give us the feedback and support and that would not surprise them on the budget request. And that's always a plus. The second thing is that if we put in this money for it and we get it and we're not sure whether the state's going to approve it or not, we could reduce how much we were taking out of reserves and always put that back in. But, you know, or, or something like that. So we really haven't jeopardized the budget because we're just, if they do it, then we're, that's five million less we'll take out of reserves that we plan on doing.
I think the proposal would be to use that money on something else, though, would be my understanding.
Yeah, it's not going to be.
Then we have to reuse the five million.
If the city were to approve this, then we would come back and have to retool our budget at that point. But it wouldn't outright cut activities. It would just move it to a separate funding source.
Yeah, that's great. Member Jacobs has, oh, okay, great. Go ahead, Member Jacobs.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. So my understanding is, is you reached out to assembly partners regarding the prospect of this. I think it's a fine idea to discuss. In, in my contact with our colleagues in the Anchorage Assembly, my understanding is that this issue is, is a non-starter for a couple of reasons, one including timing, which we've kind of touched on. The assembly will, as I understand it, engage in its first quarter budget revision process next month. And their tax, their, their leeway and under the tax cap has a number of dueling priorities. And I think the chance is, is likely low, and I am probably being generous, that that would be an option to allocate entirely to ASD. I do think it can be a conversation for future budget years, especially if we see the legislature approve a three hundred dollar BSA increase. We'll need to continue finding ways to provide as many services as possible with the dwindling resources from the state that we have. So these conversations need to happen. I'm just pointing out that the likelihood of this being able to assist with our current budget development process is likely nonexistent.
I agree.
I would say the other thing this does, it does preserve our headroom in our tax cap if we were to go this route. What's going to happen is on our tax cap, if we request the two hundred and sixty-two million that we're taking now, that becomes the starting point for next year. So we're permanently lowered by this five million dollars if we don't take additional, request it now. If we didn't get, end up getting the money, it may still be permanently lowered, but if we don't request it, it's going to be a lower anyway.
Okay, also interesting.
I mean, if the assembly is willing to fund it, I don't see a downside or a risk to actually doing it, frankly.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, go ahead, please.
Yeah, thank you. Just to that point, and I, I want to make sure I was clear here. I've seen no indication that the Anchorage Assembly will fund this this year. And so I, while we're on the record and gather together, I just want to make sure that no one else has heard differently because I want to make sure we're presenting realistic options for this year as well as framing options for, for more conversation for next year. And I have no information to indicate that this is an option to help us get to a balanced budget this year. So if anyone's heard or received information to the contrary, I think this would be a great time to share that information. And so I guess I'll double back to my original question, Member Lessons. I think if memory serves you, you had a plan to reach out to our assembly colleagues. Did you get a response back as to the feasibility on this proposal from their end?
I received an informal, I, I reached out with an informal query and received an informal response back, which essentially says that they are not done with their own mill rate setting. There's a process that doesn't happen until late April. And they are waiting for some other revenue projections based on twenty-twenty-three performance. And they are grappling with other things, including a wage increase proposed by that administration. So they certainly said that end of February would not be a timeline that they could approve something like this. And I guess at a fun, okay, go ahead.
And their approval would be coming in their March nineteenth, is it the nineteenth?
Okay, in the March nineteenth approval of that.
Right, that would be when their approval actually occurs.
Yeah, Madam Chair, thank you. Thank you for clarifying. And that's my understanding as well, is that this is a, a potential item for further discussion and frankly, exciting, especially if there's precedent for Juno having assistance from their borough in, in that capacity. But we need to make sure, that, I think we need to make sure that we're clear, that this, this won't be an option unfortunately to help us get to zero before, as we make our budget decision this month. And so I just wanted to provide clarity there to make sure we're all on the same page. But yeah, thank you.
Um, well, I guess what I, I guess I'm hearing two different thoughts. I'm hearing from our CFO that it wouldn't be a bad, necessarily a bad path to pursue if the assembly will fund it. But we also don't yet know if the assembly would fund it. So it almost feels like a little bit of a chicken and egg question that I guess is just.
Right, I mean, we never know how much they're actually going to fund until they take the vote.
So this, this is a question that I feel like I should know the answer to. That five million dollar figure that we are under as allowed by the property tax cap limitation, like whose, whose headspace is that? Is that dedicate, is that Anchorage School District funds or that's the, the total aggregate municipal tax cap?
So that would be closer to our portion of it. So there's only one tax cap that has to be beholden to. But we calculate ours separately. So if ASD were to increase in line with population and CPI, just like the tax cap calls for, this would be our portion of it.
Okay.
So right now, we would be five million under what our tax cap could grow, our portion of the tax cap could grow. So if we didn't request that, then the city could theoretically go take, increase theirs by more.
But we, in essence, have priority?
I don't believe we have priority at all. I mean, the assembly ultimately has a discretion of how much property taxes are going to allocate to either the city or the district, but it has to be within that overall cap.
Within their overall cap, okay.
But yeah, this doesn't have any real material effect on the, on the cities. Like, the city doesn't have to beholden to this. This is just information reporting of, you know, for twenty-three, twenty-four, we requested two hundred and sixty-three and a half million. We're requesting less than that right now in the financial plan.
Got it. Okay, well, I think that's really helpful. I appreciate your following that rabbit hole. Not quite sure what the action to be taken at this point in time, but I will circle it and think about some ways to continue this conversation, unless anybody else has any other thoughts at the moment.
Madam Chair, just really quick, I would, if, if this wasn't already suggested, I would suggest that you request President Bellamy add this to the next joint meeting agenda where we can continue the conversation. And again, appreciate Mr. Ratliff and all the work involved.
Great, I think that's an excellent suggestion and would be so bold as to echo exactly what you've just requested. So President Bellamy, if we could put that on the next joint meeting agenda, I think that would be a great conversation to have.
It's so be it. Will do. Thank you. And we'll be looking at an April date. So America will set that, let us know what that date is. Thank you.
But the budget will have been approved, right?
So.
Okay.
Technically, when the assembly approves it in March, they're approving the taxes.
Right.
So for them to, a month later, readdress it, if, if they would have missed that timeline.
Okay. I guess I would personally like a little bit more time to, to think about an immediate path forward. But it seems like, it still seems like whatever happens in the intervening two months, this might be an interesting and helpful conversation for future budgeting years, budget cycles. So I appreciate that, that approach and all of the comments.
And I don't know how much the city's built into their budget for the growth on ASD in the preliminary version either. So they may, they may not expecting to see our request only increase like very slightly. They may be expecting a larger increase.
The concern is that they don't have to do any sort of projection because they're already providing up to the max. So the concern I have is making sure they know that there's some flexibility and they're excellent and they know in advance that they have that budget. Because they're going to have to build contingency, genitals to stay off it. And so they're going to have to come in with some of their budget purposes and what they think they make.
I think the risk you'd take if you, if you put that on and the assembly says no, then you'd either be looking at fund balance or waiting to see if the state was going to provide more. But there would, there is, the risk is that there would be a budget, a budget, second budget, a modified budget that would end up cutting something that you thought you saved. And then starting everything, all of the emotional, all over again. I mean, I, I think most of us feel comfortable the state will.
Do something.
Will do something. I don't think they're looking at five million dollars.
Can we, maybe, you know, with that thought, since we're discussing FY twenty-five budget, a three hundred dollar increase to the BSA, what, what is the scale of, how does that offset our deficit? I mean, what is that, what does that generate? I know that we received three hundred and forty dollars per pupil this last cycle outside of the formula, and that was around twenty-five million, so.
To be a little under twenty-two million.
Twenty-two million if they were to move forward with a three hundred dollar increase, which many people have seemed amenable to.
And that would allow the local max to go up by almost five million.
And that would allow the local max to go up by five million.
So had we received that in the BSA originally, the three, even the three hundred and forty, we would have been able to include, or at least request additional local contributions from the city in our normal budget by, to turn that by a million.
Jim raised a point, and I guess I'm going to respond to it. If we do decide to budget the five million, we could just simply reduce for the budget purposes how much we're taking out of reserves by five million. And if we don't get it, it's a real simple correction. It's not something that we're planning and spending yet. We're just offsetting how much we take out of reserves. And if we don't get it, if we use that five million in reserves that we would have done, it seems like. I don't see this as, that we have to say, oh, this is going to change our whole budget process. We can just adjust it for the reserves if that's possible.
That would spend down our fund balance to like four percent.
Well, I think Pat's saying is we would, instead of taking seventy-one million now, we'd take sixty-six.
Yeah, we take sixty-six out and we do, then we can, then.
That wouldn't restore any programs. It would just be kind of a.
I think we won't have to adjust to make cuts right now contingent on that five, because that five million less one reserve.
Except the five is to pay for sports, to create the special revenue fund and not to keep everything else the same.
So we'd reduce the amount of sports cost in our general fund, reduce the amount of fund balance and increase our student activities fund.
Right, but if you do that, it wouldn't, you wouldn't, you wouldn't be saving anything. It would be status quo.
No, but it would allow you to collect that five million.
It would allow you to collect it.
I mean, that's.
And then make a decision for a revised budget later.
Yeah.
Okay, another interesting. Yeah, okay, great, thank you. Member Wilson.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to say that I, I appreciate the conversation and, and we need to be creative. I, I'm highly concerned about making any plans moving forward without even having, like truly having the conversation in support of the assembly before we, putting the, the cart before the horse. I feel like some of this conversation makes me feel like we're putting, trying to put the cart before the horse, and I, I'm just very cautious of that.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I think this has been an exploratory conversation. I don't know that any decision in any way has been made. But I agree, it's, it's good to not put the cart before the horse. I don't think anybody wants to generate a budget based on a BSA that may or may not take place. We've had a really good lesson in that from Juno. And I would not support passing a budget that's based on a number that doesn't exist. But we're making, you know, other decisions based on things that we don't know yet. So I think there's a good.
For context, as far as percentage, that would increase our tax request from twenty-four to twenty-five by, if we were to add the extra five million, by about three percent. So that'd be our overall tax request increase for our, everything with debt service. Right now, it is about one percent or less. This is what our request is.
So because it is difficult to understand, and I, I know Pat and Andy both completely get it, but I don't know when people are listening. When Pat was talking about reducing the amount of fund balance, it would go from seventy-one million to sixty-six million. Go ahead and shift the sports over to put the five million, and if they say no, then you can go from sixty-six to seventy-one million back again. I, I know exactly, it's, it's just difficult for people hearing it over a speaker, but maybe they didn't understand. So that level of risk becomes lower because you offset the risk with, the current plan was already to use seventy-one million in fund balance. So if you lower that to sixty-six as your, as your hedge against the assembly saying no, you just bump it back up in a revised budget back up to seventy-one. But if you go that path, the whole logic trail kind of puts boundaries on you not to make any changes that are currently in it, but to wait until we find out what all of those other realities are, and then you're looking at a revised budget if it's big enough. So it, it does have the safety net built in as long as you don't think that I have five million dollars, I can now add more.
Right. Right, right. Currently, the proposed budget is balanced based on a seventy-one million.
Right, so you shift that to sixty-six, so now you're.
So you need to find five million dollars more in.
So you're like just below six percent fund balance remaining, four is reserved. But it, it is a safety net because the five million's still there. You just didn't use it out of fund balance as originally planned. But you are still waiting to find out whether the assembly proves it or not, and then you can always do a revision. But, but it does mean that next week would be the wrong time to go ahead and add five million back into programs because you don't have a safety net for that.
Okay, great. Member Jacobs, please, we can't see you. So Ms. Sullivan is speaking on your behalf. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, no, thank you, Madam Chair. And to, to Mr. Anderson, thank you for talking that out for, for folks online. I, I did track that as long as we don't add additional funding to replace the five million ask for. funding to replace, uh, the five million ask for sports, um, you know, there is a fallback plan. Um, what I'm suggesting is just a matter of good governance and, and being a, a good partner. Um, if there were any indication from our partners on the Assembly that they had the capacity and bandwidth in their dueling priorities to fully fund this, um, I'd say that, that might have some semblance of, of being reasonable. Um, absent any indication that that is a viable plan from their perspective, um, I feel like that's putting a lot of pressure on our Assembly who's been frankly, really a great supporter of um, the school districts and asking them to save sports or risk us draining our fund balance even further. Um, and there were concerns that the Budget Advisory Commission uh, run out of the municipality about the level of our fund balance. Um, so that's asking them to make a really hard choice on our behalf. I feel like that's, that's not leadership to me. And so I think we would need to have more additional conversations before that decision was made. If we knew that there was a member or two that would support that proposal, I think that it would make more sense. But otherwise, it seems like we're asking for support via a budget. And that's just a really poor way to communicate, in my opinion. So again, I think it's a wonderful idea to further discuss and as Dr. Brian has alluded to, our budget challenges of the district likely will not be resolved this year as expecting a fourteen thirteen BSA increase um, seems increasingly unlikely based on the rhetoric coming from politicians in June. So we will need solutions in future fiscal years. I think that this is one such solution we should continue to explore. However, I think trying to pigeonhole it as a solution for this year is likely a lot of energy and time that could or should be spent elsewhere. So that's kind of my take on it, but, um, I do appreciate Member Higgins' suggestion and understand that the, that as long as we don't add programs, the level of risk is relatively low. Thanks.
Thank you. Member Higgins?
Yeah, just one comment. You know, what the Assembly is going to do is put aside a certain amount of money for a match with a BSA, allowing it to go up. It may go up more than that. And they may not decide to give us the very maximum. If you get a thousand dollars, they may say, wait a minute, that's more than what we got budgeted. We'll give you this within it. All we're doing is saying, okay, you're budgeting three hundred plus the five million if you want to, whatever the match is for the three hundred, they're thinking that. And if we get more money from the state, they don't have to match, they can still limit with the same amount they budgeted. So, uh, depending upon how the Assembly looks at it, all they're doing is eliminate to that and kind of projecting for what they may want to do for a match for us at all. I leave it up to the Assembly. I don't believe it, it's them. But we don't know what the precise number is going to be anyway, and they don't either in regards to our budget uh, or what they're going to approve. I personally don't think they're going to cut us from last year because this is an election year. Uh, and if they give us three hundred and we will get more than that last year, they're giving us a cut. And I think that's going to be something out there that I think they're going to have to consider, uh, politically of the state. So I, I governor won't care, but I think the legislative money for office this time, we'll find out.
Okay, um. Any other questions? I know that we're going to have an extended work session on Tuesday uh, regarding the budget. Um, are there any other immediate coming, any questions coming to mind right now? Uh, otherwise I would, uh, like to move on to another item on the agenda. Nope. Okay, great. Um, so I had a couple of questions, uh, well, actually still about the budget. And one of them was, uh, so I'm really concerned. I look back at pupil teacher ratios for the past twenty years um, from prior budgets and efforts, and I'm really concerned about grades four and five. Um, and just in a hypothetical world, is there, I know Appendix F shows us all of the schools that are, you know, how many FTE schools are losing? The budget as proposed has us losing eight and a half elementary FTE. Is there a way that we would know if we were to be able to somehow revoke, or can we reinstate the eight and a half elementary FTE, how would that be applied or distributed, or is that not known yet? Like?
Uh, we would just change that metric to the back one off the PTR increase and.
And so would it be, just like on average, you know, point two five across all of our schools, point five, or would a certain school get?
Certain schools would probably get whole, uh, FTEs and apply any time to go with it.
Okay.
Because it would trigger a either one or nothing, I think, at that point.
Okay.
Um, but we can certainly run the model and see which schools would change.
Is, it, would you be able to generate a list and show which schools would gain, gain some FTE?
Yeah, essentially just put those eight point six back to where they were taken out of.
Okay, right, this, so this is, this is not the PTR metric. This is not the enrollment based loss. This is the metric based PTR plus one for, for grades four and five. I just, I'm really concerned about, uh, like what national data are telling us about this particular cohort of fourth and fifth graders who were kindergarten, you know, when the world shut down and then they lost, you know, the first, if they were in first grade starting on Zoom, those are next year's fifth graders and next year's fourth graders started kindergarten on Zoom. Um, I think they're going to take the longest to recover, so I'm sort of feeling sensitive about them. Uh, so I'd love to see which schools would gain that P and that, you know, as a way of maybe this One Direction, if we receive a BSA increase, that the board might be interested in reallocating additional funds.
Yeah.
Um, that would be great. Um, let's see. I had, are there, I'm sorry, I, I was pivoting, but I wanted to ask that budget question. Um, I wanted to, what is our, I don't actually have the paper agenda in front of me. Correct, okay. So that was FY twenty five budget. Um, the second item on the agenda was the fiscal impact of Senate Bill one forty or other bills. And, um, we talked about what a three hundred dollar BSA might in, of increase might look like. Um, and I think I had a question because there are all sorts of, um, amendments that have been imposed on Senate Bill one forty, which originally would have had nothing to do with ASD. If new schools, so this is a question that I'm sort of still fleshing out with respect to charter schools. Um, if new schools were to be placed into ASD as charter schools through a change in the way that schools are charters, would, would that change the way that the required contribution is distributed or, or applied to our schools? And what would that look like?
If we don't assume that there's more students coming into the district overall, we would have to reduce those students from some schools and reduce the metrics, so fewer teachers in a building, whatever else, whatever other metrics, depends on type of school, of course. Um, so if we have to keep the same ADM or projecting, but then move, you know, a few million over to this charter school, where do we take that few money from? Uh, so we'd have to figure out what schools those are going to come from.
So the language of this bill would have a, it would take, there was a phrase from a legis that rob Peter to pay Paul, in that sense, is that?
Um.
I mean, you, you would be taking funds that would otherwise go across the district and siphon them off to the charter schools, to the new charter schools.
If we have a new charter school, they would get what statutory they obligated to them through the foundation formula plus anything outside the foundation formula, so like, uh, federally impacted interest earnings, uh, additional local contribution, they all get a portion of that based on their, their percentage of the adjusted ADM that they calculate, divided into the district.
Would that legislation require the local match to be distributed different too, or would that just deal with the ADM? Because, I mean, just the state form, because if you deal with the state formula, then it gets equalized by how much money you take out of the local match, you know, and it's good. So it could not make, it would make a difference at all.
Yeah, we wouldn't be able to collect any more, any additional local money under that scenario. I mean, if we anticipate these kids actually increasing our overall uh, population, like if we get them from other correspondent schools or home schools, things like that, where actually increase the, the enrollment, then we would add new money in. It wouldn't really make that much of a difference. But to the extent they would be taken from other schools, that's where we have that issue.
So if they come from the, the current pool of students, that's where we would see a loss, essentially a revenue.
For the rest of.
For the rest of the schools.
But we should have a reduction in cost based on fewer students at those schools as well.
We should have a reduction in cost.
We had taken out at one point some money coming in from that to toward schools or special ed or something else, so they took it. Just if, if I recall correctly, there was a change done that way to kind of cover for all employees and we did that ten years ago or something. I know we did something like that. You don't have.
Right, yeah, so that, well, and that's changed a little bit, um, in the last few years. But the original model that I think was set up, I think in two thousand and fourteen or fifteen after, um, HB two seventy eight passed, I think, that, that made this change. It told us to, you have to fund charter schools with all the additional revenue also. Um, and that was the one that said we couldn't, we couldn't charge them rent in our buildings either. But after that, so the process was, um, the schools that we would reduce from the charter schools, the amount of special ed funding that they were receiving through the formula, and then add it back as they spent those resources. Um, what happened is they ended up spending the resources anyway, just to get more support in those schools. Um, and it took a few years for them to do that. Like, they started building with their special education programs, and I think they maintained those. But a few years ago, we went back to the model of just giving them the money and making sure that they're doing that. It was just a bear to manage, um, for the administration to try to project out how much they're going to spend on special ed. And then at the end of the year, either taking a bunch of money back when they didn't spend it, or giving them more because they spent more than what they said they were going to. Um, the way we're in now, we're just funding them straight through the statute and expecting them to provide the special education services. We do reduce their budgets by, I think, let's say around three hundred and twenty thousand dollars across all of them to pay for some centralized related services, personnel, the psychologists, speech, where they all kind of share them instead of having to hire their own. But aside from that, they get the specialized money to provide the services.
You know, the irony of saying that, that you would veto the BSA but add charter schools anyway is that they would be just as underfunded as the district is. And it's just like Rick and Shula saying they can't afford their lease anymore. It's because they're being funded in accordance with the foundation formula. So to add more schools that are underfunded, thinking that they would be able to have the resources, the math doesn't work.
Homeschooling support is pretty awful compared to the others. Okay, just for the, for that purpose, and so you, uh, I'm not, and, and funding them at the same level that you're funding Rooka Shula and the others could simply kind of out there. Uh, because then you've got, you know, that's a charter school, native, uh, called a charter school, that's got the school, which as I understand with that provision in twenty fourteen, is that if you have space, you have to give it to them. That's one of the requirements that came out.
Actually says May. It actually says May.
I think they have first right refusal for, uh, suitable space. If we say, like, if we were to say, Abilu, that building is not suit inhabitable, um, we're going to demo it, then we wouldn't, we wouldn't have to pass that building along.
Right now, there's about a million dollars to upgrade it to meet the COVID requirements, I understand. So the demo or something, the board will consider it as we looked at. Because it's not have to tear it down and build it back up. It has to address the COVID issues, and it used to be they thought they had to raise the roof. Now they have to, just for the record on that, that's not going to be a and I, I talked once to the superintendent by it, but that's a million to two at best to get all the codes up. That's not a big cost to maintain a school that's being used heavily by charter schools and they love it.
Yeah, and what was written in that statute too is in lieu of rent, they, the schools are required to pay, or maybe required to pay the actual cost operations maintenance. Um, so they pay for the custodian, their snow plowing, whatever other costs to prepare their buildings. So that does get flowed through to.
They get filtered that way, but they're not renting the space, so.
Right.
So compared to Rooka Shula, that's not a big cost for them.
No, no, not as much.
Hey, if we plan to keep it up, they can continue to use it. They, that's what they want.
Right. No, it's a great deal for them and like acquiring the S two R.
Or their bucks, what the heck.
Um, does any other board member have any questions specific to Senate Bill one forty?
Madam Chair.
Yes, please go ahead.
Yep. Uh, this is Carl. Uh, not a question so much as, um, hoping to be corrected if I'm, if I'm wrong here, but my understanding is that, I just, we were talking about the concept of vetoing BSA and charter schools. My understanding is that SB one forty, unlike the state operating budget, budget can't be line item vetoed, that the whole bill would have to be vetoed. Um, with that said, I haven't found the legal citation for that. I just received that information act only. So if that's wrong, um, and someone knows differently, please feel free to share.
During our discussions in Legislature's offices, it, it sounded like ma- and maybe, maybe his comments were line item the whole thing. It could have been. I, I don't know the answer. I, I was under the impression, just talking to legislators last week, that, um, that he still could line item. But we can find out, Carl.
Yeah, um.
I think it'll come out during the next few committee meetings.
Sure, yeah, uh, to our chair, uh, thank you, Mr. Anderson. Yeah, I've heard the exact opposite from legislators that uh, because it isn't an appropriation bill, that the line item veto authority doesn't exist. And so that, that tracks, and I feel like I've heard that before, but it's one of the things that I'm not a hundred percent sure about. And so um, I don't know that it matters a ton for our world and our work, but it would be good information to know.
Now, the other thing in Senate Bill one forty is a seventeen percent increase in transportation, which is about three and a half million dollars, ish, three point three for us. Uh, but it may have already been pulled out in the last few days. Um, because we get about nineteen something from the state, so it's a little over, somewhere around three and a half ish, rough math. Um, but that still doesn't, that's not enough to make up for a nine million dollar transportation deficit.
And our local taxpayers are paying that nine million dollars, is that right?
Yes.
That's the request, yeah.
That's the request in this budget. Um, okay. That is good to know. Okay, thank you for that, uh, Member Jacobs. Um, and. Uh, okay. I wanted to pivot to item.
Um, I made this, um, a couple of days ago, if y'all want to look in your packets, it's a spreadsheet that has all of the legislative actions. If it's gray, that means it's really not moving. Um, some of them are grayed out because of one forty and everything got thrown into that omnibus type bill. Um, but next to it, for the ones that Andy and I could figure out, um, impact to the district, we put that in. So when you look at this later, um, you'll see, um, Andy's story's latest on the thousand dollars per student. I think it's the very last or the second to last House Bill. It's going to be heard in committee next week, um, House Bill two forty seven. Um, but it does have all the bills currently on the, on the books. Um, and kind of sort of where they stand. And Hans, I don't know if you're listening, um, I handed this off to him. Um, and I think he'll be updating it. Uh, because he, he's more focused on legislative stuff every day, and I just wanted to have a product that we could track.
Right, another one on this list that we probably should discuss, um, is a new Senate Bill two hundred.
Okay.
Um, this one has, uh, they just released a, a sponsor substitute for it today. It does have a considerable fiscal note for the districts, not necessarily for the state. But it would increase the TUR's contribution by two percent for all employees. Um, and that's about five point six million, and it would also move, um, all certificated employees under either social security or the state's duty program, both which about six point two percent cost to the district or about seventeen point four. So the total amount, the district would increase about twenty three million in costs on that. Um, from what I understand, the bill sponsored would, there's no mechanism in there to increase the BSA to pay for that. Um, however, I guess the, the sponsor would anticipate it being rolled into SB one forty as. However, I guess the the sponsor would anticipate it being rolled into SB one forty as the overall BSA increase.
This particular bill, is it is this reestablishing the defined benefit when the cost goes up? Why is it?
This does not.
It's going to be.
It's saying that district's contribution per employee goes from seven percent to nine percent. And the overall rate goes from twelve point five six to fourteen point five six on everybody. And that would presumably help with the unfundability that state has in the pension program.
Working for the weekend.
Yeah, top of my suspicion problem from nineteen ninety.
I suspect so, yeah. But I don't I don't know for sure. They just, the way that was worded is just an increase of twelve point five six to fourteen point five six because of the increased contribution to employees between seven and nine percent.
So the increased contribution to TOS would be a contribution to the past debt, not the employees benefit.
Um it would increase the total, which includes past debt. And presumably it would be to increase the employees thing too. Like right now, for anyone under defined contribution plan, we pay twelve point five six percent for everybody regardless of what tier. Um however, not all that goes into the employees account. Right now, I think it's according to what.
It goes to it increased by two. As a district contribution, it's going to be seven percent. It went from seven to nine. Or it goes from seven to nine.
Yeah. By the current plan.
Um.
Under tier three.
Right.
Well, I mean, if we go back to defined benefit.
Well, no, under tier three right now, we pay, the district contributes seven percent, employee matches something else. And then that seven would go to nine.
It that goes to nine. And then the second piece is anyone hired after the end of December twenty twenty four has to be either in the states.
Well, that language changed from the substitute. They took that outwards.
Oh, they took that part out. Okay.
And that's why it would be a seventeen point four million increase on our total wages.
Is the proposal to build a defined benefit, did that did that allow people would pass it, could it roll into that?
I believe so. There was, I think there was an election to.
An option.
Yeah. Yeah.
Corey, did you have a question?
No, I don't.
Okay. And Jim, do you want to?
Yes, Corey's listening in, or not Corey, sorry, Corey. Um Hans is listening in and he said, um to answer Carl's question, the governor can veto the appropriation in the budget that corresponds to whatever comes out of Senate Bill one forty. He can also veto Senate Bill one forty as a bill outright. So he doesn't line item one forty, but when it goes into the appropriation, he can line item pieces and parts either way. Thank you, Hans.
Yeah, that's really helpful. Thank you. Um, okay. Well, this is a terrific document. Um feel like for the next few finance, you know, in March and in April, we should keep this as a as a running item on our finance committee meetings, um just to review where we're at with any bill movement, I guess, to probably make it. It's an interesting time of year. Um, okay, so it is twelve twenty five. I did want to, so I wanted two more things um in our committee meeting today. Let's briefly look at item number three, which is review prior budget cuts the ASD has implemented. And are all of these available online? Do we know?
Yes.
These are on the.
They will be.
They will be. Okay, so folks who are online, we have some, we have the the document sort of summarizing all of the legislative bills.
I share again.
And also um a chart showing departmental FTE FY thirteen to SY twenty five. And then a chart showing a camera, maybe it looks like ASD budget decisions and it's up there. Okay, so these will be posted to the agenda.
But really, just, yeah, the the FY seventeen twenty four budget decisions kind of walks through some of the high level ways in which we um balance the budget, the structural deficit come off our pro formas from those years. But you can see there's a lot of use of fund balance, uh closing schools, reducing staff, increasing PTR, different grade levels, closing out spur. So really, just kind of, you can see the the just the changes over time. It's kind of a high level thing. It wouldn't certainly didn't encompass everything, but um.
I think it does give great perspective and a little pushback to a comment made at the budget advisory committee meeting uh by a member of the municipal administration that said something to the effect that ASD had no idea this was coming. And I think this does a great job of highlighting that for years we have seen and known about a growing structural deficit. And that we've taken steps, uh prior boards, prior administrations have taken all sorts of steps to promote efficiencies uh and align resources with instruction uh that are available. So I appreciate this. It's a great, it's a great one page cheat sheet. But it's worth it to be sad that it exists.
Yeah.
Any, does anybody have any questions before we move on?
False, thank you.
Just about this retrospective.
And then the last document was, for those of you online, was the one that just showed um how our departmental FTE has changed over time. And those, you know, some, by and large, a lot of, most of them decreased over time, some of them increased, but it's a just shows some perspective on what change has been made over time.
Can you sort of briefly speak to maybe some of the areas of greatest growth? You know, what what areas have you have we seen that the most pronounced changes?
Sure. So a couple of them are um you see new departments like mental health and preschool stood up. Some of those resources were new. Some of them came from uh other organizations like through special ed or something for mental health. Um in preschool, we did add uh more resources for pre K classrooms as we were getting uh the ADM problem board for the REEDS Act and just to help provide more pre K in general. Um other ones, you can see human resources increasing over time with um that used to include equity compliance, which is the next one down, that's ten seventeen, which now the first equity. The uh, so that was split off in two thousand twenty one. So the total of those would be um growth. IT, you can see that one growing. IT is a little bit mixed back because they had the ed- education technology in there originally too. And then the recent changes we've made with IT with respect to the one to one initiative of Chromebooks, uh need significantly more resources to be able to manage all those devices. Uh those are the biggest ones in terms of growth. Uh we see teaching and learning come on, but those are a combination of the curriculum instructional services and that ten thirty six and professional learning and library services. So they actually did make considerable cuts those years. Um or that year from two thousand, I believe, eighteen to nineteen. And then you'll see an increase in teaching and learning in FY twenty four. And that was when we brought in the reading specialists from the Esser funds that we had that we had hired.
Okay. And so does this um reflect reliance on Esser funds as well, or this is just general fund?
This is just general fund. And there wasn't a whole lot of uh departments that had uh FTE come in from general funds.
Because so many were sourced, so many of our Esser funds went directly to teachers.
Yeah, there were school things more than uh, so it was the IT folks, there's a couple warehouse drivers that are going away for next year. And um the reading specialists were the three biggest ones.
Okay, great. Any follow up questions online? Thanks very much. Um, okay, I'd like to pivot to item number four, um which is health arts. And so you have a follow up discussion on the administration's proposal that was brought before the board at our last. So it's waiting on the work session, right? It was both. Okay, thank you. Um, and in particular, I was hoping that we could dive into sort of we don't talk about fiscal notes here, but um you know, what is, what are the financial ramifications of this proposed change, which we didn't really get a chance to dive into. And so um I guess I I asked Ms. Sutton, who is um our curriculum specialist, but there's probably a better title than I'm coordinator. Um, thank you, curriculum coordinator for health and PE. And before we get into the bigger picture, could you just please share what does professional development normally entail for our elementary health teachers? Sort of understatized, you know, this year.
They have twenty eight hours of required professional development. So they receive professional development for seven hours in August, a full day prior to the start of teaching. They receive um a half day in October during conferences and then the Friday of conference week as well, another three hours for each of those. Then there is the November full day training, seven hours for that. Another December, two hours human growth development specifically for their upper grades. Then there is another three hours in February um during conference week afternoon, followed by the three Friday. So that is a total of twenty eight hours required training.
On an annual basis.
On an annual basis, in detail, in depth for comprehensive health education elementary specifically.
Could you, okay, so you used a phrase which um I may be more familiar with. Could you sort of outline what comprehensive health education means entails?
Um comprehensive health education is different than component health education. Component health education would be like, I'm going to teach um nutrition, physical activity and human growth only. Or I'm going to invite in the fireman and the nutritionist. Those are pieces, parts, components. Comprehensive health education um is what is as by our own legislation and as best practices across the nation and is what we currently do. It involves um teaching all aspects of health and wellness across not just your body system, but your safety, your nutrition, and your physical activity, your diseases, your um health and hygiene, your growth and development. So it includes ten different areas uh of a total com- total look at health and wellness across.
Okay. And so in the twenty eight hours that are out at our elementary health teachers would annually get, you would review like all ten of those?
Um yes. So in August, it's the setup to um the August seven hour training is preparing teachers to to um be ready to teach for the year um with in-depth training on the first quarter of their lessons. So the first um three units of what they were teaching, the first three sessions of, so we're we're doing um Save Children's Act, we're doing safety unit, we're doing body systems, um we're um beginning our nutrition sections. Then we're moving into O and R S E L, which is defined as health slash S E L is their job title. Then we're moving into our October trainings, which are again specific to the quarter, followed by our um human growth, which is prepping them to do the um intense unit that follows in January. Our February's are specific to wrapping up those units and moving into our last quarter. Our November is also prepping us for our um second and third quarter.
Good.
And then we also have the option of new teacher training for all new incoming to um not just new to ASD, but new to ours. So if they transfer from classroom to helping to help or if they're new to the district, they receive optional training in um early August prior to their start.
So thank you for that. It's really helpful. Um one thing I learned through the professional development that the board authorized for the Alaska for the new CKLA reading curriculum this year, paying for time for professional development. I mean, there's a, there's a cost for that. We have, remind me how many health educators we currently have?
We currently have twenty four active, a few that are sub, so twenty four, twenty six. Um we have a few that are classroom model. Pilot type programs um that are satellite programs. Their professional development is thirty five, uh thirty minutes to one hour with an option of additional training if they are, and that's it by invite of principal.
So in the schools that have piloted and piloted the integration of health into the classroom teacher, those teachers are receiving thirty to sixty minutes of professional development here?
If invited, if I'm invited by the principal.
If, okay.
I ask them.
Okay, that's the big difference.
Um also, they have options of attending any of our trains, but they are also tasked as classroom teachers to attend CKLA, math.
So the doors open.
Door is always open. And I go and do a training one on one as it's asked.
Okay. Have, and maybe this is, I don't know who to ask in the administration because there are so many of you. With this proposal, has the administration thought about a cost relative, the cost of professional development for classroom teachers? For somewhere between an hour of professional development a year and twenty eight hours of professional development a year? I mean, time is money.
Uh I I mean, from the elementary lane, you know, our professional development opportunities for teachers for all content areas are pretty limited to within our contractual requirements for two staff meetings a month. That's a contract, right? Uh we also have in-service days that we have already scheduled that are still that are district based. And then there's site based level PD. This year in particular, with the Alaska REEDS Act, we weighed heavy into all those pieces that we were doing. So this this year in particular was an unusual year with Alaska REEDS, which got training in. Um the twenty eight hours that Melody referenced, I would um off the cuff, I would be very hard pressed to say that we offer twenty eight hours in all content areas for all teachers across all in elementary.
Yeah.
Seems to be in my pressure imbalance of how we do that. But from the standpoint of of the opportunity to provide those trainings, those are our required opportunities that we have available for all teachers to access training in whatever content area that is, depending on what's happening in all of our schools and and initiatives and things that are being asked us to do.
But what I guess I'm not hearing is that there's not, there's not, nobody in the district is saying that it's a feasible or be likely that classroom teachers would receive the extended subject of health specific training that our health educators are currently getting.
I would say it would be unrealistic to give twenty eight hours on the health training specific to classroom teachers on top of everything else. So from that that standpoint, to be realistic, you can see a difference there.
Yeah.
Now, would it be a half hour? I don't think it would be a half hour here. Right? So um you know, as we progress in this model, that would be something that we'd have to build upon in that work committee to be able to determine what that training module really looks like and be able to all of plan for that.
Great, thank you. President Bellamy has a question?
Yeah, I do. Uh just uh he already answered one of them, but um I'm just, how how mu- are are any of these health physicians attached to grants? Or do we have a grant that provides a staff development outside of our operating budget?
We, no health physicians are attached to a grant. There is additional opportunity through a grant from the state to provide equipment and training for all teachers in anything having to do with physical activity and wellness.
Is that about fifty thousand dollars?
It is. It uh every year we apply um for a fifty thousand, which covers elementary PE equipment primarily with um opportunities for ASDSA Summer Academy Training for anyone and everyone who would want it in health, PE or physical activity to cover our um information needed to get out to all teachers on physical activity, wellness, PE and health. So it's more broad, not specifically based. Or that we would have to rewrite a grant that would target specific training time and cost, which would be different than the one we that's currently offered.
Okay. So then the twenty plus that you've already, that you mentioned, they've all, all of them have already been trained, is that right?
Correct. And are trained on a regular basis and will be trained for six hours next week.
Okay, and they all have uh what, K eight certificates or K twelve certificates?
Um it varies. They're all certified for what they uh to, they are certified duly for the classroom and then highly trained in health education.
Okay, does it, do they need a certificate that say highly trained in health education for us to hire them?
We do not require that. Um we ask them to get it within a certain amount of time for. We do not require that. We ask them to get it within a certain amount of time for a practice too, as you do most other content areas. And their training is not only provided by me, but by community partners, outreach agencies and hired specialists.
Okay, my final clarification is just trying to understand, so we, the health teachers that we have now likely came from other positions within our district. So they probably would have taught something else, correct?
Most of them, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions online? I wanted to, thank you so much. I wanted to also talk about art and STEAM because these are all in there together. I might even throw science in too, because I know that's a part of this proposal. I want to say that at some point I heard in this conversation that our teachers were hard to find, but I know having helped work on the joint resolution that they were not named as, you know, the paraprofessionals, the bus drivers, the cafeteria staff, but what if any shortage do we have for our teachers right now?
I would say from the human resource lens, they're not a position that we would single out as, you know, hard to fill. You know, a special ed self-contained classroom teacher, we can find almost no candidates in that category, right? Now, if you talk to elementary principals, I don't know, they may be anecdotally saying that there's not a real deep pool there. They're not finding a lot of candidates to interview for those positions. But from, you know, the aggregate lens, the human resource lens, I wouldn't say they're hard to fill. I don't know if Eric can speak more specifically to the experience.
I think from the, I think anecdotally is what you're saying, yeah.
I think there was a concern that none of the programs that are offered currently in state have any art endorsement or art education programs. So U A S, U A F, none of them have.
They're not generating.
They're not generating art-specific teachers.
Okay, got it. But we haven't had a critical shortage of them like we have in other areas.
We've, we've had schools periodically where we can't find anybody, but like as a product piece compared to special ed, it's no other areas, it doesn't, it doesn't.
Okay, okay, great. That helps to understand. Yes.
Linda Wilson.
Thanks, Linda Wilson, please go ahead.
Do you have, and you can share the information later with me if you don't have it in front of you. How many art and health teachers do we have in, for example, in, in elementary and secondary? Do we have those numbers? How many teachers with full-time F T E equivalent, I guess?
I can, I mean, I can, I mean, Melanie spoke to the, the health, from elementary side of it to the health standpoint, art and health essentially mirrors each other because of scheduling and allocations, because they operate in that fifty-fifty schedule. So the allocations mirror each other now, whether someone's a partial F T E and offshoots. What we're talking about is roughly twenty-five-ish allocated F T E per staff, per, per, for each of those two groups in elementary.
Art gets slightly more as health is the current piloting model at some of the classroom.
Right, and I, and to add to click to Melody, so like the health vet bucket of F T E in those nine schools that are currently doing a STEM model, that F T E to be able to do the STEM model are pulled into that bucket of health. So, so when I say those twenty-five positions, there's nine schools doing the STEM model. The, the teachers that are doing the pull-out STEM are, are leveraging that F T E that is from the health teachers. Yeah, so that, that, that bucket is still there in terms of.
So maybe twenty-five health teachers?
You would, you would estimate twenty-eight, I believe, F T E-ish?
Okay.
For each of the health and art.
Okay.
So you're just under sixty total. And as Senior Director Visti said, the F T E still exists in the health section, though utilized in a different way for a few of the F T E, which is why our actual personnel assigned to health looks different than the F T E.
So the creation of a STEAM position would, would put the same, the same F T E would be used?
Correct.
Withdrawing health, health and art and calling them STEAM F T E?
Yeah, under the, under what's being proposed is we would, correct, we would collapse across those positions. We would collapse across those positions to, to be able to have fewer itinerants across all of our elementary schools, provide essentially that one point old person per building to have that continuity of instruction across, across the.
So, yeah, so rather than two part-time teachers that come in and out, they would have one full-time staff member.
Okay, great. Does that help all board members in person and online understand that?
What was your originally question?
Well, it was Linda Wilson's question about how many art and health teachers do we have? Fifty-two?
And, and that would be looking at the larger K twelve, we were speaking specifically for the elementary.
So, so I just, I'm pulling up the tables right now.
Okay.
So one of the things like with both health and art, because of the itinerancy, there's a lot of F T E that is caught up in being itinerant. So we have right now, school F T E is roughly twenty-three in health, but we're actually staffing at about twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Because of all the itinerancy and master scheduling, we'll be able to build that. We actually go over what the actual allocation is.
Because you need the time for a teacher to travel, the teacher to go from school to school.
Itinerancy increase our cost, right, in both health and art. So we're talking about twenty-three, we're adding five more positions, roughly six more positions, be able to balance the master schedule. So it costs more to do that itinerant model.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll just back up. These are individuals, I don't know the F T E, so you're right, F T E is probably different.
And then if I look at art in elementary, it's the same thing, it's around twenty-three and it's actually about twenty-eight F T E. So our costs are going up because of the itinerancy aspect of it.
Thank you, it really helped, great discussion. Can we, okay, I had an ignite question and I would be happy to hear any others, but back in the F Y twenty-one budget process, I was looking over that document, Title Four funds were proposed in that February, which, and maybe that was like a one-time thing, can, are there any other ways or any other sources that, you know, we can pull from? This is kind of a question.
So I, I feel a little bit first then, just to speak to Title Four. So Title Four is about teacher professional development and, and leadership development as well. So, but there's federal grant requirements that you can only leave those items in that grant for so many years at a time. So if it was used and phased out, it's likely that we had to meet the federal requirements to phase out that, that funding.
Okay, okay, so that was just taking advantage of a particular moment in time.
Right.
And we did have the instructional coaches?
Yes, and we did that with instructional coaches as well. It's usually about a three-year timeframe that we're able to do that with and then we have to phase it out when it comes to federal grants.
Have any other mystery grants that we're phasing out?
That's where I was going to chime in. We did change the way that we did some of our grant budgeting to put forward our total upper limit request this year. And so we kind of took the, as a baseline, what the actuals, our current F T Es in those programs, their current budgets, and then kind of made modifications based on what we knew was going to change, either new grants coming on board or adjustments down. In my review of that, it did not look like there's really much room in those existing grant funds. They have their F T Es planned out already and their other, you know, programmatic expenditures. And of course, those have to be approved by the granting agency. So I did not see where there was an area of room.
Well, thank you for exploring a question I didn't know I had until. Were there any board member questions on ignite? Okay, I wanted to pivot to STEAM. So we've certainly, I mean, the board has gotten a lot of emails from committee members about art, about health, about STEAM. When I think, this is me personally, I have a STEAM classroom, I'm envisioning lots of gadgets and gizmos and gadgets and gizmos cost money. So could somebody help me understand what the costs of a fully equipped STEAM room might look like at all of our elementary schools? What do we know about that?
Right, so I mean, this would, the STEAM model, my understanding would replace the, the science kits that we use and have those like just at the schools instead of take them to the warehouse, refurbishing them and sending them back. So we do have two F T E that are currently allocated to just refreshing those science kits. We spend about sixty thousand dollars per year on the supplies to refurbish those. But I think I was told it'd be about a little over three hundred and forty thousand dollars to, for startup costs, for new supplies, for those, the school-based ones, and then about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars ongoing for supplies after that. The two F T E would save about approximately a hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, and then actually I didn't realize that I was gonna ask about the science kits, but are we saying that we have existed, like an existing inventory of science kits, which I can envision inside the warehouse and I know that I've seen, you know, stationed at the front of a school this season, and we would get rid of the existing science kits?
We would probably repurpose those.
Correct, yeah, I was just gonna say, we, we would likely repurpose those as a part of the STEAM program and like use, use the existing resources that we have to create the new model. So there's also art consumables that are used as a part of the budget as well, so those would be in the mix financially. And so essentially all of those resources would be pooled, a committee would really look at developing the STEAM model and, and using those existing resources that we have in the budget.
Okay, so this is getting down into the weeds and maybe nobody is down this path yet. So if I'm a current elementary school teacher and I want to study, I don't know, the water cycle, right? So I'm sure there's some sort of a science kit. Like, would we be asking, I mean, I can imagine, you know, one school or maybe a few schools at a time using the water cycle kits? Like, I'm assuming we don't have enough kits on any one topic right now for everyone in A S D.
Right now, they're on a rotational.
It's a rotation.
It's a rotation. Every teacher gets the same kits, just at a different time each.
Okay, yeah, so how would that, so I know, if I know anything about A S D, we have a highly mobile student population and one thing the district has tried to do in the past in math and reading is have like a kind of a structured sequence. So is that the same thing that would happen in a STEAM curriculum and how is that possible if you have to rotate kits?
So depending on how we set up the model is whether we would need to rotate the kits or not. So you can set it up so you don't have a rotating kit. It depends on what the projects are and how the activities are lined out, whether or not you have to rotate kits and materials. So right now the kits are rotated because some of the materials in them, you reuse them, but maybe you would use them at another time in the year or they hit mark with each grade level content. Those, that can all be adjusted pretty easily.
Yeah, and right now, so it's a couple of different models that the schools that are currently doing the STEM with, they're delivering it. The schools that are, there's one model where they're using the science kits at the school, they're in trade house in their, in their classroom. There's also the model where we have a school that's using Project Lead the Way, which has, and so you, in, in both of those models, you have durable equipment, right, that you don't need to replace, that stays once you buy it, it's up for a cost and then it stays there. Then you have more of the consumable equipment, which kind of falls into some of the art equipment. You have the, the pipe cleaner tubes and things like that, those are transferable, we're using them in art. They also would be used in some of the STEAM stuff. So some of those costs would be neutral across because we fold those student materials over into the STEAM model. And then the durable equipment, for what Andy was talking about with like the, that three hundred thousand, that would be brought into purchasing the materials for the durable equipment for the classrooms. And that would be what our anticipation is.
But the, part of the issue with the science kits is that a classroom doesn't have enough room to even store all of those materials.
Like the lobby areas of schools.
Well, that, that's for transportation and the rest of it. But if you had a STEAM classroom where that's all that was taught in that room, you could have all of that material. And so the, what you're doing in fourth grade, let's say they were using pipettes, that could also be a first grade activity, still using pipettes. Whereas right now they're in the fourth grade kit that comes and the first grade kit that comes. But if it was in one classroom, it could be used, the one set could be used by both grade levels when it's appropriate.
And then, and then we reduce the centralized distribution of that to those positions and the, the refilling would come within the school ordering and maintaining, they have everything at the building level. So we reduce some of the central administrative requirements to be able to pull that, push that and come to the building level.
Um, I realize we're getting close to the end of time. I appreciate all of this. What about professional development? I mean, I looked at the project lead the way, it's like a national, I mean, I know I've heard it, I know we have board members who are, you know, deeply supportive of it. It's really exciting, but there are all kinds of recommended sort of professional development, I don't know, opportunities, like, can you talk to us?
The key cost is actually pretty inexpensive for a curriculum development. And one of the really, if that model was something that we chose to do, you can upfront, we even have Marty in the district, have a trainer and they can train anybody in your district for free, it's just the cost of their time, which would then be during our cross-district training opportunity days. So we don't have to pay for them to be specifically certified in Project Lead the Way or anything else because we have district people that can do the training. Okay, and they have, right now, that particular company has brands available to pay for, but we actually already have the support with that particular brand in-house. But it would be the same as we've always done in-house for any of our science kits and anything. We train our people to then train our people.
Any immediate questions online about STEAM? And I know that we have a longer work session coming up on Tuesday.
I'm good for now, thank you.
Thank you. I, the last minute, I wanted to pivot to, back to Andy and I think this is, we're gonna revert back to maybe prior budget cuts, so item number three, this is something truly caught off the press. I don't know, are you sharing a screen? You're fantastic.
Yeah, so a request was made, we had this chart we did, I think last we did it in twenty-one or twenty-two, that showed the staffing reductions by state function over time. So this is from F Y thirteen to F Y twenty-five by function. There is a footnote at the bottom that for twenty-five, we did move a number of F T E from I T that were previously in District Admin Support Services over to Support Services for Instruction. These are, and this is, you know, getting our cost in line with state functions more appropriately. These are typically employees that are working at schools on the instructional equipment or are working on instructional software, so just the maintenance of the instructional side of the house.
Is that like the teacher who's supposed to get paid an agenda to do the tech at the school? Am I making that up?
I'd have to check where the, I T actually pays those attendance now, but I'd have to check and make sure where those are being coded to before I say it's like.
They have just started placing I T people at schools about that time.
Yeah, so we have all these I T folks out in schools, just servicing their Chromebooks and whatever other technology they have there, predominantly at secondary schools. Elementary schools, we're still paying on agenda and then people are pushed out as needed. But we do have permanent employees at high schools and middle schools.
Great, and then just to sort of quickly review, saying we're at time. Each of these functions, this is a, so instruction has decreased twenty-one percent, twenty-point-three percent as a function of its own, of it, you know, what it was in F Y thirteen, the F Y twenty-five F T E is, is eighty, is seventy-nine percent of what it used to be, it's twenty-one percent down.
Yeah, and we've been, part of that is based on enrollment, so this would be the staff that are assigned to schools based on how many students they have. Enrollment's gone down by twelve percent. Uh, enrollment's gone down by twelve percent in that timeframe, so you would expect a corresponding decrease in instruction, all things being equal.
Of twelve percent?
Uh, yeah, approximately twelve percent.
So the additional percent, is there a fraction of the P T R increases?
I would say that's probably generally correct, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, there might be some other ones and twos, but that's by and large the largest driver.
Yeah, yeah, Corey, and then that's gonna be the last question for today.
Andy, I've been trying to do some research on that myself when talking to legislators, when you say eleven-point-three, is that entire F T E district-wide, or is that just instruction? Because I'm showing that it's gone down sixteen percent in instruction F T E at the same, at the same time we've lost twelve percent of our students.
Um, so that would be overall district-wide F T E. The instruction F T E would be the twenty-one-point-three, that would also include, um, paraprofessionals, but.
Can you run that number for me, make sure I'm right at some point? Maybe not right a second, but just in general.
Sixteen percent over the same time period?
Like since twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, we've lost sixteen percent of our F T E for educators, yeah?
Or just teaching, or?
Eighty-eight.
Yeah, turn it up to that.
Thanks, I just wanna make sure my number's right.
Great, and then apparently we've lost some connectivity online with seeing your hands, can you guys hopefully tell me whether or not you have any other questions?
I'm good.
Hearing none, okay, great, thank you, I would move to adjourn, sitting three minutes late, with apologies and gratitude for everyone involved. Thank you, guys.